It is Thursday, the 25th of February, 9:30 AM. And welcome to this morning, this day's in fact, planning development control meeting. I am councillor Theresa Evans and I am the Chair of the Committee. And I'm going to now call upon the Senior Democratic Services Officer, Dave Shaw, to do a roll call of the members here today. And then tell us which officers are attending the meeting. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, members. First of all councillor Clare.
Good morning. Yes, present.
Thank you. Councillor Evans.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you again councillor Leaming.
Good morning, how I'm present.
Good morning councillor McLean.
Present.
Councillor Reed.
Present.
Councillor Raphael.
Present.
And councillor Bentot.
Yes, present.
Thank you. I've had apologies from councillor Rutter and councillor Benton, who is a standing deputy for today's meeting. Could I give you the officers in attendance, please? For this morning, we have Julie Pinnock, Service Lead Built Environment; Catherine Knight, Service Lead Legal; Michael Wood, Senior Environmental and Planning Lawyer. And the planning case officers are for item seven, Collingwood, item eight, Hampshire Constabulary, Catherine Watson; and item nine, The Lodge, Sean Quiddley. So thank you, Chair. Just to inform you that I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services and I'm actually joined today by Clare Buchanan and Nancy Graham, also from Democratic Services. Thank you.
Muted Theresa. Theresa, you're muted.
I'm mute.
Sorry. So sorry, I will say that again. Michael Woods is our Public Law Manager for the morning. And Catherine Knight is assisting us this afternoon as the Public Law Manager. A few housekeeping points. Members, I'm just informing other people because members know all about this. Members will turn off their cameras and microphones if they're not speaking. And they will let the Democratic Services Officer know if they lose power or any IT problems. There seem to be a few around at the moment. And because this might affect their right to vote. To members of the public. Once you've been invited into the room, as it were, virtual room. Please, could you turn off your cameras and microphones? Because this will reduce the background noises and the disturbances. When it's your turn to speak, you have three minutes and you'll see a clock comes up on the screen, which does a countdown. You will be informed when your three minutes are up. Do finish your sentence, but no more. And we had a few complaints last time because somebody had a few more seconds than somebody else. So please ensure that everybody is on parity and you only use your three minutes allotted plus finishing your sentence. It could be afterwards that there are possible questions of clarification from the committee. If there aren't any questions, that doesn't mean anything at all. But sometimes members of the committee want to just expand something you might have said. And a reminder to everybody to turn off their mobiles or put them on silent. We are today, according to the government legislation from April 2020, recording the virtual. Well, this meeting is virtual because of that legislation. And I'm also advising that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel shortly after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details. And the recording will remain thereafter. We've already heard the apologies and deputy members. The Vice Chairman is one of those who unfortunately is not well enough to attend today. So we need nominations for the Vice Chairman. Could I propose councillor Clare?
Can I second that, please?
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? So thank you. Welcome councillor Clare. You're the Vice Chair for the session today.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciated.
Thank you. And disclosures of interest?
Yes.
Brian?
I'm standing down on item eight and I'm speaking on the tree preservation order.
So you're standing down on that one as well?
Yeah.
I'd like to say. Sorry Chair.
Raphael?
I've got an interest on the tree. I can't find the number there.
The CPO item?
Yeah, one before that Chair, in Ossbury. Pick up Long Ash. As I'm, I live in Ossbury and I'm a member of the council for Ossbury. Not a member of Ossbury Council, but a member of the council for that area. I'd like to declare a non prejudicial interest in that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you Chair.
Is that it for declarations of interest? So moving on down the agenda, membership of subcommittees. I don't believe that we have any to set up.
That is correct Chair, nothing on this item.
Then the next item, item four on the agenda, is to agree two sets of minutes. I'll take them separately. First of all, the minutes held on the 17th of December 2020. If those are agreed, perhaps you'd like to unmute your microphone and.
Agreed.
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 Right, so by general acclaim, those are agreed. And then the second set of minutes, the 21st of January 2021.
Agreed.
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 Thank you. So those are both agreed. We now move on to the business items, which start with. Oh no, first of all, we have to agree the update sheet as an addendum to the report. Same procedure, if you agree with that.
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much. Now we move on to the business items. Just for the members of the public. The case officer will give a presentation. Then it is members of the public and Ward Councillors' opportunity to speak. There could be questions afterwards for you from the committee. Then members will ask questions of the case officer. Then we'll have debate and then we'll have the vote. And the Democratic Services Officer, Dave Shaw, will do a roll call for people to record their vote. And then at the end of the application, there could be a short delay while we load up the next presentation. You can see that the first presentation is already there on our screens. The committee will be taking a break in the middle of the morning. And obviously, there will be a lunch break. And then two o'clock is the start of the afternoon session and most likely a break then as well. But we will inform people as we go along of the breaks. So we move to the first item. On which is 20, agenda item seven, 20/01850/ful. Erection of a new detached dwelling and detached garage with car parking and use of existing access road from Lower Chase Road. Collingwood, Lower Chase Road, Swanmore. The case officer is Rose Lister. And Rose's presentation is already on our screens. So when you're ready, Rose, we're ready to hear the presentation for this item.
Thank you Chair. Here we have the red line plan. You can see Lower Chase Road at point of cursor here and Broad Lane running down here. The area in blue adjacent to the red line here, point of cursor, has already been developed previously. It's got five houses. The area here at the point of cursor is the public open space. There will be allotments that are due to be implemented this year. There have been questions regarding public open space. There were amended plans to move the access from the public open space to the private road here. Here we have an aerial view of the site. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a more updated version that shows the development here. You can see Lower Chase Road running here and Broad Lane running here. Here we have two site plans. At the top left, we have a close up of the site showing the access of the new road here from the new development that leads down to the allotments. There is some landscaping shown here that is secured by Condition Six. At the bottom right hand side, you can see a wider site plan showing the development that was completed at the end of last year here with five houses. There have been some questions in relation to the village design statement, which reads. And when considering new development, particularly land previously used as garden space, the plot should be protected from overdevelopment and insensitive or inappropriate infilling. The scale should reflect village environment and maintain levels of privacy and amenity for neighbours. I'll talk about this throughout my presentation. Just to give you an idea, the proposed dwelling shown is approximately eight metres to the boundary with Collingwood, this neighbour here, at its closest point and is approximately five metres from Woodlawn House at its closest point here and eight metres from the furthest point here. And the proposed building is approximately 28 metres from Collingwood in distance and approximately 34 metres from Woodlawn House. Here we have proposed elevations. The design and materials are similar to what has been approved and built out on the adjacent site. And there are, if you have a look at the north east elevation and northwest elevations, there are no windows on the first floor that would directly overlook the neighbours. There are four roof lights on the rear elevation that would serve bathrooms. Conditions 13 and 14 would secure these as obscure glazed windows and that no additional windows on the first floor of these two elevations could be inserted. Here we have at the top, the proposed floor plans. On the first floor plan, you can see the north. Northwest elevation, sorry, where the bedroom would be facing the road. At the back, on the north east elevations, there are the bathrooms here that are all served by the roof lights that would be obscure glazed and therefore there would be no direct overlooking of the neighbouring properties. At the bottom, you can see the street scene. The middle picture here, the top of the street scene would be the view from the allotments showing the new development here and the proposed development here. You can just see Collingwood in the background. At the bottom of the screen, you can see the street scene along the road that would lead to the allotments where the access is located. The new development would be here. And Collingwood, you can just see here. Now we move on to some photos. The top left is taken from the boundary of the site with Collingwood looking towards the allotments. The top right is from the same location, looking towards the allotments, but from a slightly different angle. You can just see the roof of the adjacent development here. The bottom left hand side, you can see the access road. And you can see the new development just to the side here on the left hand side. And as an approximate location for the new access, it would be roughly between these blue boxes here and this cone. So it would remove a small section of existing hedge. But as previously seen on the site plan, additional hedges would be planted along the boundaries. The bottom right hand side is taken from the patio area of Collingwood looking towards the whole site. And finally, we have some photos assessing the neighbour impacts. Top left hand side is taken from the rear garden of Woodlawn House. And this is taken towards the end of their garden, looking directly across where the proposed development would be. You can see the new house in development here in the background. The top right is taken from the boundary of the site with Collingwood looking backwards towards Woodlawn House and Collingwood here. And the bottom left hand side is taken from Woodlawn House just outside the conservatory, looking towards the site. You can see the new development adjacent to the proposal here. And on the bottom right hand side, this is taken from Woodlawn House from their patio area, looking towards the site. The recommendation is to commit as it accords with the development plan policies. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Rose. We now move on to public speaking. And the first person is speaking as an objector, Mr Brendan Dunne. Good morning, Mr Dunne.
Good morning Chair.
Good morning. So you have three minutes to tell us what you want to say. And there should be a clock on screen, but there isn't at the moment.
I can't see a clock.
No, you're right, there isn't one.
Okay Chair, I will turn it on when the public speaker commences.
Okay.
Okay, so shall I go now?
Yes, you have three minutes to start. But before you do that, Dave, what was that about the clock?
The timer comes on when the public speaker commences.
Oh, I see, yeah, so it will be on screen when you start speaking. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Okay, ready, steady, go. So thank you Chair. Good morning councillors, good morning Winchester team. My name is Brendan Dunne. For the last 17 years, I've had the privilege of living with my family at Woodlawn House on Lower Chase Road in Swanmore. So we live immediately next door to Mr and Mrs Pelly at Collingwood, who are working with the developers to drop that large four bedroom house and a garage into their back garden with the obvious implications, as you could see from Rose Lister's photographs there, on the quality of my life and my family's life in our own back garden. In the time that I've got available, let me share with you five reasons why I'd ask that you reject this application today. Thing one is Swanmore, we don't need it. As I'm sure you're very aware, Swanmore is required to deliver 250 new houses in this period. Achievement has been 161 to date. There are further 210 in the pipeline. QED Swanmore doesn't need another singular house in order to deliver on its commitment to you, let alone begin to do unnatural acts in order to achieve the same. Thing one, we don't need it. Thing two is we don't want it. As I'm sure you've observed, there are objections from 12 different households bordering the new development site. So Lower Chase Road, as Rose was showing you, Broad Lane and also Crofton Way. All saying variations of the same thing, which is basically, please protect the environment that we live in, especially right now. Also noticeable by contrast that there are no letters of support. Are you sure I had three minutes here? On the third one, for the parish, the parish council don't support this either, haven't rejected it twice already. Once on the grounds of we don't need it, but also on the grounds that it's in contrary to the village design statement, which says that we do not build on back gardens here in Swanmore. Finally, your trusted colleagues councillor Weston and councillor Gemmell have already rejected this twice and you'll hear from councillor Weston in a second. And finally, I don't subscribe to any political party. But I do strongly believe that it's right to live our lives with fairness, decency and integrity. So you imagine my surprise when Mr and Mrs Pelly finally told me what they were planning to do. And when I challenged them on the implications of that, the response I get is, yes Brendan, this is a purely selfish act. This morning, you know, I asked that you weigh that kind of attitude against the community of people here who don't need it, who don't want it. The parish council don't support it. Your trusted colleagues don't support it. And I asked that this morning, you support the community and God knows, we need community support right now. And instead, support the community and reject this application. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And there could be questions for you from the committee.
No Chair, none are indicated at this present time.
Yep, so thank you very much for coming along today. If you'd like to turn your microphone and your camera back off. But obviously, you'll be staying, you can stay as long as you like, but obviously, you'll be staying for the outcome of this application. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you. And so we move on now. No representative from the parish council. So we now move on to one of the ward councillors, councillor Vicky Weston. Good morning councillor Weston. And when you're ready, you have five minutes. And the clock will come on the screen once you start.
Thank you, members, for the time to speak on this application. Development should be compatible with the distinctiveness of this part of the village, which is low density homes at the edge of the village. So squashing this new large executive house into a good sized garden does not follow the existing and established pattern of development. And just because this falls within the settlement boundary does not mean that this is the right place for a new home. And just because the previous development on the edge of the Swanmore College playing fields was allowed, altering the established pattern of development does not give licence to continue to harm this special character of this part of Lower Chase Road. Development should not just be acceptable. It should be enhancing and positively respond to the surroundings. And I note that the report states that this. Is acceptable, but at no time.
Councillor Weston, you're sort of.
Sorry, I'll carry on. I fail, I don't know what happened there. I fail to see how this reflects the special characteristics of the immediate surroundings. As you would have seen, that all the properties have long gardens that back onto the adjacent sensitive ecological area that's mentioned on page 25 of your report. You should be concerned if conditions are needed to be in place to require mitigation enhancement plans. There are indeed 14 conditions on this application alone. The gardens are all well established with mature hedgerows and trees along the boundaries. This new house would result in significant intrusion of built form into the open garden space and would be visible to a number of properties. It would be overbearing and reduce the neighbours' enjoyments of their gardens. There seems to be no mention of the impact to the immediate vicinity. Councillors, we had a very long meeting last night and we were presented with the glossy 2021 update of the council plan at full council, which it states, the natural and built environment is to be protected, maintained, sustained and enhanced. So how is building in an established garden with existing excellent biodiversity, as reported in the ecology report, maintaining, sustaining and enhancing the natural environment? Members, I ask you to please question how this development is enhancing the environment and the distinctive part of the village of Swanmore, consisting of the low density homes and large gardens. The new building will add to increase the domestic paraphernalia, surface runoff, increased light pollution and noise that will surely have an impact on this area and the ecology, being so close in proximity to the sensitive area next door. All developments like this supporting, so our developments like this supporting and maintaining the environment resilience that the council is promoting. If this development is permitted, it will be more cutting down of established vegetation, digging up and burning, poisoning and polluting the environment that is not in line with the climate emergency policies that we heard by one of our administration councillors last night at the budget meeting, that we should be careful of building something up with regard to the amount of carbon that we are putting into the environment. So please, can we start practising what we preach? If the planning application is accepted, it really does prove that this council does not value the very special and important environment of villages by cramming this dwelling into a very important garden and green infrastructure of the village of Swanmore. So I ask members to really consider refusing this application because it will not support the ecology and will not enhance Swanmore Village. And it is against the village design statement. And I would just ask you to please consider this very carefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Weston, you did have a sort of bit of cut out at the beginning. Are you happy that you've told us everything that you wanted to say?
I think so. I think so. Was there anything that you, did you not hear what I was saying? I went back and repeated the last.
Okay, that's fine, yes. No, we just lost a few sentences at the beginning. But if you repeated them, that's fine.
I went back, I hope so. I hope I repeated the ones that were cut out, yes.
I'm quite happy that we.
Basically, ecology and the environment, please, think about that. And the impact on.
There could be some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Members of the committee, any questions for councillor Weston?
Chair, there are none at this present time.
No, so thank you very much for your contribution councillor Weston.
Thank you. Councillor Evans.
Yep, okay. And then if you'd like to, you already have muted your camera and your.
Chair, sorry. Chair, so sorry. Councillor Reed has just popped up on the chat function for a question.
Didn't quite catch who was.
Councillor Reed, his name's just come up for question.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you Chairman, sorry for the delay. But as I say, we seem to be having some sort of technical difficulties down the same as well. It's just a question with regard to the village design statement. What is the date of that statement?
This might be a question for Rose unless councillor Weston wants to.
It's just been updated actually. It's just been redone and updated. It's quite current.
That is good to hear. Thank you.
Is that it, the Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you Chair, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So the last public speaker is Mr Philip Dudley, who is the agent. Good morning again, Mr Dudley.
Good morning.
Good morning. So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, members. I am the agent for this application. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Members, I am the agent for this application, speaking on behalf of the applicant. I just really want to clarify some important issues. The application site is within the settlement boundary, therefore there is presumption in favour of development as long as it aligns with certain policies. You need to understand that the character of the area has changed. The site adjoining Collingwood has been built for five dwellings by the same applicant. And this has changed the character as it is introduced front to back development. Therefore, the proposals for a new dwelling to the rear of Collingwood simply reflect the pattern of development that is now established in the locality. Therefore, it is not contrary to the village design statement. The access road is already constructed as part of the new housing development and also provides access to the new allotment site. Again, this forms the now established character and access to the dwelling will continue this approach. The proposals have no effect on the public open space to the rear with the allotments. The dwelling will benefit from all the services that have already been installed for the new housing, including connection to the drainage system. The proposals have been changed following the initial submission, where we've ensured that all habitable rooms that face towards the adjoining development to the south west and towards the allotment to the south east have no habitable, have no habitable rooms or any windows overlooking that for overlooking or privacy. Suitable conditions can be attached to ensure screening and more planting is done. Another important point is the position of the new dwelling in relation to Woodlawn House is no different from the position of plot five of the new development in relation to Collingwood when that was approved. So the character is not being changed. The impact is therefore not detrimental to the adjoining properties. The overall development achieves the same sort of density as the adjoining houses and viewed in context with the overall inclusion of Collingwood. There are no statutory objections from highways, ecology, drainage or landscaping. So therefore, in summary, this provides an opportunity to integrate a new dwelling into the existing character that has now been established by the new development. I trust that you will follow the recommendation and permit this application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There could be some questions for you.
Okay.
Just wait a few minutes for people to register. We have a system where they register on the chat and then the vice chair tells me if there are any questions. I have a question to start with. Does your client own the access road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's part, yes. He currently owns, there's a private road and all the residents have an access with the, and the parish have an access to get to the allotments.
Right. Could you just remind me again where the allotments will be? So you come along the access road and there's a turning
Yeah.
Bit at the end. Where are, where are the
The allotments are at the end of the turning head, the whole of that site will be the allotments at the end of the turning head. So where the, so on that site plan where the blue line was, the whole of that area at the back is the allotments.
Okay, thank you.
No, no questions, Chair, indicated.
No. So thank you very
Chairman, I did, I did put in for a question, it's obviously been missed.
Oh, sorry councillor Reed, I thought that was
No.
The one before.
No.
Anyway, councillor, councillor Reed.
Good morning to you. You indicated that the residents of Collingwood had no problem with the close vicinity of the new house that was being built across the driveway. Is that correct?
I was indicating that the, I don't know the history of the original application in terms of what Collingwood thought, but what I'm, what I was trying to say is that obviously the house in plot five, that relationship to Collingwood is exactly the same as the relationship of the new house to Woodland. So obviously those five houses were granted consent with that same relationship with Collingwood.
But the house, the new houses are built on what used to be Collingwood land?
No, no, that's always been separate.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, any other questions?
Not on my screen, no Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Good. So thank you very much, Mr Dudley.
Thank you.
Coming along.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Member.
Turn your microphone and your camera back off. That'd be great. But obviously you'll be staying with us for the rest of the application. So Rose, anything that you want to clarify before we move on?
I've just been going through the conditions, Chair, and I realised I've made a couple of mistakes for condition 12. Where it currently reads prior to commencement, an ecological mitigation and enhancement plan shall be submitted to and approved in writing by the local authority. It should include a second sentence saying that the development should proceed in accordance with the approved plans. And there's a typo in condition 13 where I've got windows twice. And so it should read, no additional windows shall be constructed on the first floor, north and northwest elevations of the property hereby permitted. And the second half of that sentence, unless otherwise agreed in writing by the local planning authority, should be removed.
Okay, so we're just crossing one word out, the first windows.
First windows and unless otherwise agreed by the local planning authority.
So are we, are we crossing out all the other bit about constructed in the first floor and so on?
No, no, it's just the first, so the first windows in that sentence. And then unless otherwise agreed in writing by the local planning authority. So it just says that there are no windows to be addition, additional in those two elevations.
Oh yeah, so we are crossing out. Just to be clear what we've got here. It should read, condition 13 should read, no additional windows. And then it goes on to unless otherwise agreed in writing.
So it should read, no additional windows shall be constructed on the first floor, north and northwest elevations of the property hereby permitted. Full stop.
Oh, not unless otherwise agreed in writing.
Yeah, that should be removed.
Okay, got it. Important to get that right. Okay, members, then we go on to members' questions to Rose. If we'd like to look at page 24, principle of development and impact on the character of the area design and layout. I'm still a little confused. I have visited the site and I'm confused as to the exact location of the allotments. If you could just re-point that for me.
Yes, Chair, if you have a look at page 31. That's the first, first page of the presentation.
Oh, I see. It's all the blue line.
So the land adjacent to the red line to the south, where it says Singleton's Farm, that has now been turned into five dwellings. Everything to the rear would be the new allotments that are due to be implemented this year.
Right, I've got it. Thank you. Vice Chair.
No questions, Chair at the moment.
Councillor Reed, were you wanting to ask a question? Saw your move, your, your, your face move on the screen. No?
No, Chairman.
No.
Okay. Thank you. If we could then move on to impact on neighbouring properties and highways and parking.
No, Chair.
And then the rest of the report, ecology, drainage and nitrates. I have a question on the ecology. When I was reading on the planning portal, the ecology report, it was quite insistent about the removal of a compost heap. Because it said it could have grass snakes and what else was it? There's another form of wildlife and that it shouldn't be removed in times of hibernation and breeding. Just look for the details of it. But that doesn't seem to be in the conditions. Slurps and grass snakes. And it shouldn't be removed in, it did state the times during hibernation or breeding. And there's no condition about slurps and grass snakes.
We could quite easily add a condition requiring that development aligns with the ecological survey, Chair.
So this, this would be covered by condition 12?
That is something separate. So that condition 12 is asking for additional information for mitigation. So things like bird boxes, bat boxes, that sort of thing. An enhancement plan, so additional planting. But we could add an additional condition requiring that works are progressed in line with the details within the ecological assessment.
Doesn't say that though, does it?
No, but we could add an additional condition.
Mrs Finnick, is that all right to add that in?
Yeah, Chairman, I was just wondering whether we could amend condition 12 and say that the work should be undertaken in accordance with that. And then also ask for the ecological mitigation enhancement plan as part of that, so it could be two staged.
Okay, we'll come back to that. So this ecological report recommended bat and sparrow boxes. Would that be all part of that same condition?
Yes. So if anything suggested within the ecological report would then have to be built out as part of the application.
Yeah, undertaken in accordance with that detail.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I just think those things are quite important for the ecology of the area. So Vice Chair, are there any more questions?
Yes, Chair, councillor McLean and councillor Reed.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Well, two questions really. Firstly, the compost heap's a movable structure anyway. It's not a permanent structure. So it could be moved from one place to another in the garden without actually causing any damage to anything. Time of year, I guess, is important, but what I suppose the question would be, were the same conditions applied to the development of five homes next door? Is it a fair condition effectively?
The five houses adjacent are not included in this red line, councillor. Therefore, they wouldn't be subject to these conditions.
I understand that, but was, was the same condition set for the development next door? That's all I'm asking.
I'm not sure.
I couldn't say.
Because we're looking at the application within the red line, councillor McLean.
We are, councillor Evans, Chair, but we also have to be fair.
Well, I looked to Mrs Finnick. Are we looking at anything outside the red line today?
So we cannot look at things outside the red line as part of this application. Each case is taken on its own merits.
Chairman, I think, as you say, I think what councillor McLean was, it's useful perhaps to understand what happens at another site. And I know, you know, there is always an issue about fairness and etcetera. But we do have to consider each site on its own merits, having regard to the relevant material planning considerations that arise in that case. And I think what we've done is looked at the assessment on this site and that's what has led us to recommend approval to you subject to these conditions, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor, thank you. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. On the ecology, the last sentence deals with external lighting. How close is this site to the South Downs National Park? Which obviously has the dark sky situation with it. And the other one was regarding to drainage. Is condition five strong enough? If the land has a large deposit of clay on it?
So in regard to condition five, at the moment, there is no details that is supplied for drainage. Condition five requires that all details of the drainage are submitted and approved prior to, prior to commencement of any development. So if, if they look at the type of soil and its clay, then they would have to put things in place that would satisfy our drainage engineers. That the work, the site could progress without having issues of flooding and foul and surface water drainage issues.
Okay, councillor Reed.
Chairman, if we might add, we can't tell you how close this is to the South Downs National Park boundary because I just can't quite get it up in time on our plan. What I'd say is it's probably a sufficient distance away that it wouldn't have an effect on the dark reserves of the national park.
It is quite a long way away. The South Downs National Park touches on the northern part of Swanmore.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't certain. I've been through the South Downs National Park plan, which is not terribly informative in that sense. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair, any further questions? Vice Chair.
Sorry, Chair. No, not at this time. Thank you.
So there being no further questions, we'll go into debate.
Not yet, Chair. No, nothing. Councillor Reed, Chair.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. I find this quite difficult. I, I also went and had a look at this particular site because I, I had difficulty in understanding it from the plans provided. But it did become very apparent. Under normal circumstances, I can't see a vast amount wrong with it. I understand Woodlawn House and that situation. The thing that does worry me is that this is, to all intents and purposes, back garden development. And if in the village design statement, there is a policy against such things, we are the committee that approved the village design statement to be an acceptable document for us to take into consideration. If we don't take it into consideration, I'm not terribly sure what a visual, a village design statement is going to be useful, to be quite honest. So I'm finding this one a little bit difficult and I will be interested to hear what other members have to say. Thank you.
Councillor Gordon Smith, Chair.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Yes, I find myself in agreement with these points. Building in back lands is always contentious. There's always overlooked problems and has always, has an effect on the settlement pattern. And the agent said, oh, well, a new pattern has been set by the development and that's the new character. I think there's a certain amount of false logic there because if you, if you follow that logic completely, you end up allowing anything because that changes the character. So the character has changed. So you can allow more. And I can see this has been quite contentious because it's been revised a couple of times and the building has been twisted round. And well, dear me, it's, it's, yeah, it is a difficult one. I also think that, you know, if we respect democracy and we respect the efforts of the village to come up with their design statement, we should be adhering to this sort of democratic theory and not just ignoring them. You know, then the next time around, people aren't really interested and so on. Anyway, it is a quandary.
Thank you.
Councillor, yeah, councillor Bento.
Councillor Bento.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, I can remember walking past that new development some time ago or when it was being built and being quite surprised at seeing what was going on there because it is very much on the edge of the development strip. There are one, two houses further down on the opposite side of the road. And then somebody got this And then somebody got this urban spread of five houses there, which looked very much out of character, and I'm surprised that that got through in the first place. And now that we're bringing up this back garden development, I do have some doubts about whether this is really the best place to put another property, although I can see, I can see both sides of the argument here, and it's a very difficult one. I think we're all a bit stretched on this one to work it out, but village design statements, I am a board councillor for a couple of villages, and I know there the parish councils do get quite passionate about that. They like to see that they know their area and they want to see things continue in that way. And they know better than all of us generally what's best for their area, so I'll leave it at that.
Good. I'm going to go back to Rose, because I was intending to ask on the village design statement, and I didn't, and that's my error. So we've heard three councillors now mention the village design statement and developments. But we just have the office of view on that.
Yes, Chair. The village design statement, I believe it's guidance point 2.3, that says, "When considering new development, particularly land previously used as garden space, the plot should be protected from overdevelopment and insensitive or inappropriate infilling. The scale should reflect the village environment and maintain levels of privacy and amenity for neighbours." So it doesn't necessarily prevent backland development such as this. It gives guidance on what we should expect to see from developers who are looking to develop their back garden. That would be my view on it.
Okay.
Thank you. I've got councillor Laming, Chair.
Councillor Laming.
Thank you. Like the people just before, I'm very concerned about the weight given to the village design statement. It is an important document, and it reflects what the local people feel they need and they want. The characteristics of villages do change. If you go back long enough, they were very high density as such. But now we've got a spread out community and looking at the actual environment that this is being put into, the whole area of that close has changed the attitude of the outlook of the village. And I think its characteristics have changed quite a lot, and it gives me a great quandary on whether to put more weight on the village design statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I have no more, Chair, at this time.
Right, I just would like to add my comment at the end. I went along to the site and had a look at it. I wasn't aware that the five houses down Lower Chase Road had been built, so they're very nice design. And I would suggest, if we look at page 33 of our report, that the building of those five houses actually changes that area, because if that house at the back of Polling Wood was on its own, you could say, yes, that's backland development, but now with the five houses opposite, it's like a little settlement of its own. So I don't see it particularly out of place. And also, there can't be any more development or access from that road, because that virtually cuts off the the access to anything else. So we heard from Rose that it isn't necessarily against the village design statement. We are a planning committee, and we have to find material reasons to refuse applications. And I'm not sure that just basing it on people's interpretation of the village design statement would be enough for me, anyway, as to have a material planning reason. Yes, it has had two applications, and they've amended it, increased the landscaping. And I think we also need to remember that it is still in the settlement boundary, that it's not actually in the countryside. And now it's got five houses opposite it. So on balance, I shall be supporting it because I can't see material reasons to refuse it.
Chair, Mrs. Pinnock would like to comment, please.
Mrs. Pinnock. Thank you very much, Chair. I'm sorry to come in at the end. I thought it would be useful, and you've summarised some of that yourself, just to say that the village design statement, when prepared, must be in accordance with the Winchester District Local Plan. So it kind of has to, there's a hierarchy there in terms of policymaking. And I was just looking back through the Winchester District Local Plan Part Two now, which was adopted in April 2017. Obviously, the village design statement must accord with that to have been successfully adopted. And I was just looking, I found Policy SW2, which was the policy in the local plan that allowed for the five dwellings on Lower Chase Road. Obviously, that was an allocated site in the local plan, and I just thought that was useful, those two points to raise to you. Yes, it is within the policy boundary. It was an allocated site for these five units in the local plan, and that secured the access to environmental and other matters. And as you say now, we have to consider this one on its merits, having regard to everything that's happened before, Chair. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was useful. So there being no more debate?
No, no more, Chair, thank you.
So we'll move to the vote, and I'll pass over to Dave to ask members how they're going to vote. This application has been recommended for approval with the conditions on pages 26 to 29. We have amended Condition 12 and 13, as you've heard. So in that light, I'll ask Dave to take a roll call of members as to how they're going to vote.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Clea.
Four.
Councillor Evans.
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Four.
Councillor Laming.
Four.
Councillor McLean.
Four.
Councillor Reed.
Four.
Councillor Raffel.
Four.
Councillor Bento.
Four.
Thank you, Chair. All eight members in favour, Chair?
So the application is approved. We'll just take a few minutes while we load up the next presentation. Oh, hello, Mrs. McIntosh, welcome, and Mr. Montague, nice to see you both. We have a presentation, first of all, so if you'd like to turn your microphone and your cameras off, and then I'll call upon you to speak. And while I'm talking to you both, you're sharing three minutes, and it doesn't matter who goes first or who goes second, but we've decided among yourselves which way.
Well, after you, Kate, in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if you'd like to turn your microphone, your cameras off. So I can see that the case officer, Cat Watson, has got the presentation up.
Yes, Chair, can I just, councillor Laming, I think councillor Laming was going to leave this meeting, having a personal and prejudicial request.
Yeah, and how are we going to manage this?
Councillor Laming should leave the meeting, and then we will ring him to rejoin at his conclusion.
How will he know when he's to rejoin?
We have his telephone number to call him.
Okay, so councillor Laming, if you'd like to leave the meeting, and then the committee clerk will ring you and wait for you to rejoin. Possibly that might be our break, anyway.
That's fine. I've already put that on chat to David.
Okay.
Thanks.
So in theory, we shouldn't see you at all, should we? Great.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, could Mrs. McIntosh please switch off her camera? Thank you.
Thank you. It's just that it just helps the system, otherwise we get so much disturbance. Right, so we're ready to start on item eight, which is 20/01/498/4, Hampshire Constabulary in Romsey Road in Winchester. The application is to extend the temporary permission granted for a period of two years from 16/00957/FUR Condition 1. And the case officer is Cat Watson. Good morning, Cat.
Morning, Chair.
And when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So the application is for the retention of the former sales and marketing suite for a further period of two years, which would be backdated till last August 2020, when the first application expired. So here we can see the location. We've got the wider constabulary site, and then within the orange line, we've got the site for the sales and marketing suite. Here we've got the site location plan, so that just zooms in a little bit more. So on the red line, we again have the location of the sales and marketing suite, and also can see where the access from Western Terrace is. And then we've got the site layout. So here we can see, just at the bottom, within the red line, we've got the building, and then we've got some areas for parking. These were all installed as part of the 2016 permission for the sales and marketing suite. And here we can see the access onto Western Terrace. We've got a gate across there at the moment. And the landscaping plan, so that just gives a bit of background in terms of the landscaping. So if we look on the right-hand side of the screen, again, we've got the plot with the buildings, the parking spaces, and then some soft landscaping around those. And here we've got some photos showing the now blocked up with hoarding former vehicular access from Western Terrace. Now it has a lockable pedestrian gate that's only available to be used by people working on the form sales and marketing suite. And here we have photos of the, what are now the project offices, formerly the sales and marketing suite. So the top left hand corner, you can just see that in the distance, and we can see some of the parking. And then the bottom right-hand corner, just a close-up view of the actual building. And that concludes the presentation, Chair. My recommendation is to permit, subject to the conditions contained within the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have two public speakers, both objectors, Mrs. Kate McIntosh and Mr. Tim Montague. We have seen them both already this morning. So if you'd like to put back on your cameras and your microphones, good morning again.
Good morning, thank you.
I'm just waiting for Mrs. McIntosh to come in.
Okay, and I.
There you are. Okay, so once someone starts speaking, the clock will come up on the screen, and you have three minutes, so you can share that in any way that you want. And at the end of the three minutes, I shall ask you to stop or finish your sentence and stop.
Thank you.
When you're ready, off you go.
As already stated, I am here to speak as an objective to this scheme for the further two years' extension of the temporary permission for access to the Knights' Quarter site by Barclay Homes. My reason is that this access was granted to allow punters to get to the marketing suite. That suite, as we've already been told, has now been replaced by a suite accessed off the Romsey Road. Therefore, the reason for the access via Western Terrace is no longer justified. The closure of that access to all but the emergency vehicles has been built into their detailed planning consent and goes back to the outlined stage. What possible justification is there for an extension to this request, as requested? The application makes no statement of need. Is it possible that they intend this access to be used for site traffic? That would be entirely inappropriate coming off a narrow residential street when an alternative is already available and in operation. I'm in touch with 10 neighbours who are all of this same or similar view. That's my plea.
Thank you. I'll just add on then, yes, I concur with Kate's point, and I do object. I mean, I've just looked at the planning application site, and there are 15 objections on that, half of which from August, when this was first put forward, and half from February, after the letter that was sent round. There's been a lot of email sort of traffic to try and to make sure that there is representation here to object. And it clearly is this, it's the main point, that there is a marketing suite access on Romsey Road. If those offices that they originally used as the marketing suite are now, you know, are still used as site offices, that's understandable, but they can be accessed through the site. And Western Terrace is a single-track road. It's busy enough already, and there is a lot of nervousness in the community that ongoing extensions will then somehow creep into some sort of permanent access. And that's really, we can't sort of have that precedent put forward. So I think this needs to be objected as it stands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Could be questions for you from members of the committee?
Okay.
I have none at this present time, Chair.
So no, doesn't look like any clarification is needed.
No.
So thank you very much for coming along. Obviously, you're going to stay with us to the end of the application. But if you could turn your microphones and your cameras off again, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for coming along today. Cat, anything you want to add in the light of what the objectors have said? Might get questions on those issues.
Yes, Chair. So I think there's been a bit of confusion for local residents as to regarding what the former sales and marketing suite will be used for and how it will be accessed. So it's been used by Barclay Homes as what they call a welfare unit. So it's for employees of Barclay Homes, so not the contractors that are working on site, but the sort of admin back-of-house staff when they need it, when they have to be on site because they need to discuss sort of background matters, you know, anything that's happened on site that they need to discuss. They can use it for meetings, brief meetings, they can use it, it's got a loo, it's got a small kitchen. So it's really just for them. They access the site via Romsey Road because that access is now up and running. The new sales and marketing suite adjacent to the Romsey Road entrance is now up and running. And with regards to the access on Western Terrace, as you would have seen from the photos, that has now been blocked off. as you would have seen from the photos, that has now been blocked off. There is a pedestrian only gate. And part of the original consent, once the development is complete, is that will be completely blocked off to traffic other than emergency vehicles and pedestrian and cyclist use. So there is no way that any vehicles could at the moment access the, the site via Western Terrace because that has been blocked off to vehicular traffic. So I hope that just clarifies things a little. But yes, if, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Cat. And so the report is page forty one and forty two. So I was going to suggest that we have questions or anything, even if you need to. Could I, I start by just being reminded about the gate? So the gate is a pedestrian gate, but it's not locked, is that correct?
Chair, no, it should be locked. I was advised that it is locked. And the Barclay Homes staff have the key. So I don't believe that contractors will be, will be using the gate. I think that they have to access the site through Romsey Road. But the Barclay Homes staff have the key. And when I visited on site in November, it was locked, it's a padlock, I think. So it's not accessible or shouldn't be accessible to the general public only for those using the former sales and marketing suite.
But that, so that's the, the bigger gate, but the pedestrian gate, is that locked?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, the pedestrian gate from Western Terrace, yes, that's locked.
Who, who is that gate for, that pedestrian gate?
It's for the Barclay Homes staff that are using the former sales and marketing suite. And so they have the key for that. And so it's for them to use, to be, be quite honest, it didn't look like it was used very often when I was there on site. But obviously, that was only a specific time and date that I was there. But now I've been reassured, it's not for public access, it's not for contractor access, it's for the use of the Barclay Homes staff using, specifically using that former sales and marketing suite.
So in, I'm sorry to hold the questions for members. So in that case, when the development is finished, in the two, if this gets permission for two years, is that gate going to go completely?
Yes, so the original consent for the site requires that vehicular access to be stopped up. So it would be stopped up, at the moment it's hoardings, but it will stop, be stopped up properly. It'll be, yes, that's, that's, that's how it's gonna happen.
I remember reading that now. And my last question. Why, why does this activity have to take place on site?
I think, Chair, I think it's sometimes, and I know a lot of the activity can take place off site, but sometimes if there are logistical or, or strategic problems within the site, I think Barclay Homes find it helpful that somebody is on site from, from their side of things to help better coordinate any, anything that need, that, that needs to be monitored on the site. So that, that's how I understand it, it's being used for, and hence only the temporary permission for two years because they don't anticipate them having to need it after that because the, the development should be, if not completely, then substantially completed by August twenty, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any questions on, on the report?
Yes, Chair, the councillor Reed, but I have noticed Mrs McIntosh has raised a hand. I wondered if you'd like to ask her.
I've noticed, Mrs McIntosh, I'm awfully sorry, I can't ask you to come back in according to rules because you had your three minutes that you shared with Mr Montague. So I'm, I'm sorry, we can't have you asking whatever is there. But do feel free to ask, to come, ring up and ask the question later of, of the officers. So councillor Reed, yeah?
Thank you, Chairman. It's really a follow on from what you were asking in a sense. Do we know what the final use of this parcel of land is once the two years graces up? What is the final use for this parcel of land? Is it landscaped? Or is there another structure going on there? Only the main plan will tell us that and possibly the officers might not be able to answer this straight away.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not one hundred percent certain, but I believe it will be, well, the building will be removed. That is part of the 2016 consent and carries through to this current application. I think it's going to be landscaped. So I, I can't a hundred percent confirm that. But from my recollection, the building does have to be removed and any hard standing has to be removed. And then that area will be landscaped.
Okay.
Thank you. That, that was quite interesting because I think that will, will tell us exactly where we're going in the long run. Thank you.
Cat, it does, following on from councillor Reed's question, it does say under landscape and trees on page forty two that the building must be demolished. But there's no condition to that effect. Is that, is that covered by a previous condition?
Yes, I know as part of the main consent that there is a, a condition show that that part of the, sorry, I've lost my train of thought, apologies. So.
That the building will go and the area landscaped. So if that's covered by a previous condition, fine. But if it isn't, do we need to put it in?
Condition one covers that, doesn't it?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think condition one does cover that because it says, it states that the marketing suite and any associated hard standing and fencing must be removed and the land restored to its former condition in accordance with a scheme of work submitted to and approved by the local planning authority. So I think that should cover that for you, Chair.
Good, okay. Vice Chair, any more questions?
No more questions, Chair, thank you.
So debate?
No debate indicated, Chair.
Well, I'll just say that this is just for two years. We seem to have covered the future of the site. I know that the local residents are concerned about the access from Western Terrace, but there doesn't seem to be that there will be access. And so I'm happy to support this two year extension.
I have no debate, but Mrs McIntosh has raised her hand again, Chair.
I, I hope I have explained to Mrs McIntosh that we can no longer take any questions from members of the public because we have already had that part of the application. Thank you.
I have no more debate indicated, Chair.
Okay. So over to you. This application has been recommended for approval. Extend the temporary permission for two years. There are only two conditions and three informatives all on page forty three. And so I pass over to Dave Shaw to do the roll call for members to give their vote.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. I think councillor Bentote said, requested to debate the item.
Oh.
Right, can, oh, sorry about that.
Oh, I apologise.
It was a very late press of the button. No, I'm really quite reassured about all this. I was just going to point out the, the third paragraph on page forty two, which seems to justify that the, you know, considers, there won't be any incident, well, not consider there will be any significant increase in car, harm caused to the neighbouring amenity. And in fact, it will be some improvement as the road is blocked off. So I feel very assured that that meets all the conditions. So I was just going to add that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more contributions to debate?
No, Chair, thank you.
So, back to Dave, roll call of members for the vote.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Councillor Clea?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Raphael?
Four.
And councillor Bentote?
Four.
So that's all seven members in favour, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so that application is approved. Going to suggest that we take a break now. And so the time is ten fifty one. Shall we start again at five past eleven? And then that gives us time to ring councillor Lamey and get him back in. So we'll take a break, members, until five past eleven. Which is case number twenty slash oh 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 eight four slash H O U. This is the Lodge Home Lane Spa Shult. And the application description is construction of a replacement garage, amended plans, construction of a single story side and rear extension with amended plans and internal reconfiguration. The, good morning, we've got Mrs, councillor Wood, Mr Tovey.
Yes, good morning.
Lovely to see you. If you could, until it's your turn to speak, which is after the case officer's presentation, if you could turn your microphone and your camera off until then, would be great. Great, thank you. So the case officer is Shaun Quigley. Good morning, Shaun. I think you've got your presentation ready.
We have, we're just gonna kick it off now, Chair.
Yep, so, yes. Off you go.
So, thank you very much. As you said, the Lodge Home Lane Spa Shult to the north, to the northern boundary of the village of Spa Shult. The application has two components. The construction of a replacement garage, including the demolition of the existing garage, and the construction of a single story side and rear extension on the main house. There's a picture of the, from the north of the site, looking into where the replacement garage will go. The replacement garage will go on to that short, low hedge area. I'll take you through the site. There's, there's the site, marked the lodge with the path marked up the eastern boundary, occupying quite a prominent position on, on Church Lane. There's the property. I should, I should say, Chair, the, the history of this site is that this, the, there was a, as I understand it, there was a a, a large house on this site which was demolished and the host property is one of four or five that were built on the site of the, the previous property in the early nineties, which I think I refer to in my report. There's the, the block plan showing the extend, the single story extension to the south of the main house. A, a large plot to the north of the house is the proposed replacement garage. And I think an important point here, Chair, is to, is to say that the access lane runs up the, the access road or lane to the properties, all the property, or three of the properties runs up the eastern boundary of our site. And that, that's the way the garage will be accessed. But it's important to note that in front of the, in front of the property to the north east, there's plenty of room there for cars in any event. And indeed, a, a while the lane widens at that point to allow vehicles to move freely. It's also important to mention, I think, that the area to the south of the house is, is available for parking at the current time. So the site has ample, ample room for vehicle movements. Here are the proposed south and west elevations. Important to note there, I think mainly the, the single story nature of the extension and its relationship to the house achieves subservience. And, and you can see there on the, on the top drawing the size of the proposed garage, which although large, again, it's important to note the relationship with the existing property. Again, on the north and east elevations, you get a good impression there of the relationship between the garage, the scale of the garage and the scale of the existing house. Again, although the, the garage is, is large, it is in proportion with the main house in accordance with relevant design guidance and local plan policy. There's the ground floor of the house showing the extension on the right hand side, occupying the side and rear portions. It's quite a contemporary design. And as I said, it's, it, it, it is, it is, it is not in keeping with the house. It is a contrasting contemporary style. And in any event, is well shielded from views from the church lane by the mature hedging. There's the elevations of the garage. There's a study accommodation above, accessed by a staircase to the left hand side. A dorm, a dormer window at the top facing away from adjacent properties into the site. And in materials in keeping with this development as a whole. Proposed garage floor, two car spaces, accommodation above and the roof plan. Moving on to the photos, this is, this is the widened access area that I referred to. Let's jump ahead. Are these on autoplay, Julie? They're sort of whizzing through.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I don't know how that's happened.
Okay, so that's the, that's looking into the site, the, that's the main house on the left. The, the garage building that you can see in the centre of the photo is, is the garage of the property next door. And the proposed replacement garage will go between the house and that, and it will back on to that existing garage. And so when I say in my report that it will be viewed against a background of existing development, that's what I mean. You'll be able to see that in another photo. Just taking some photos, Julie. That's, that's, that's the, the wall of the adjacent property. So you, here you'd be looking right into the side elevation of the proposed garage. This is the view from the other side of the existing garage. So this is the neighbour's property, this will be the view. So the proposed garage will back on to that, that garage that you can see there. And the significant tree, which is a protected tree, gives, in my view, a, a good deal of cover for the proposed garage. This is the access road, so this road accesses the lodge and the two properties beyond. There was, there has been some objection or concerns raised about the ability for cars to pass in this area. As you can see, cars accessing the new garage would actually pull over in front of the house. And in any event, as I referred to earlier, there's the, the area to the right, which is widened to enable passing to happen. But in any event, there's lots of room around this property for vehicle movements to be accommodated. Now, this, this is a view from the field and again, it's just to show the relationship between the house, the existing neighbouring property's garage. And that area between is the one which will be occupied by the new proposed garage. So from this view, you'd see a bit of the front of the garage and the gate. see a bit of the front of the garage and the gable end. Julie? Okay. And that's, that's my presentation Chair.
Thank you very much. And we've got a bit of noise disturbance. Is that in your end or? I'll stop now. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the public speaking. We start off with Mr Tovey, who's an objector to the application. Good morning again, Mr Tovey.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. And you'll have three minutes. The clock will come on to the screen when you start speaking. And I'll have to ask you to stop after three minutes, but of course you may finish your sentence. And so when you're ready, the, the clock will start.
Thank you Chair. And I'd like to run this presentation and I'm happy to take questions at the end of it. Thank you.
Do you want to start speaking? Because you've had 30 minutes, 30 seconds.
No, that's okay. I think a picture say a thousand words in this case.
Okay, so we're just to read, are we?
Yes.
For those listening on the broadcast, Mr, Mr Tovey is showing us a video of the access and how he sees the site being used. So, thank you very.
concludes my public presentation.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that was very different for us. Thank you. And so there could be questions from members for you. Could I start? Who, obviously that, the road that you showed us in the video, is that jointly owned by all the properties which actually?
No, the, the access drive is actually owned by the lodge, but there's a covenants requiring free movement of vehicles for the other properties. Mayfield House, which is where I live, and Woodbine Cottage, which is our neighbours.
And then you sent us an email. I don't, we had a very late night last night. So I don't know if you sent it last night or, or today, but requesting a 106 agreement, which we'll ask about later, over the shared drive. But you have a covenant on it anyway, so that you have to have access to your properties. Is that right?
Correct, yes. There are concerns that construction work will obstruct the drive, particularly the construction of the gable end of the proposed garage that borders that three metre wide access. And three metre is a minimum which we require for things like tankers for oil and sewage.
Thank you. I did ask the case officer about a management plan for the, the building work. So we'll come to that later. Thank you. That, that's it from me. Vice Chair, any questions?
Yes, councillor McLean Chair.
Councillor McLean.
Yes.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Just one thing, at, at the very end of it, of the end of the video bit, you say it goes from this to this. And you showed a computer generated example of the garage. How did you arrive at figures that you know, and you could assure us that the, the height and the width are accurate in the computer design?
Yeah, the, the drawings actually give the heights of the existing buildings, I know, and also the height of the proposed garage. And using that information, you can quite accurately construct a computer image of the same dimensions as that's shown in the plans.
Thank you.
Question, any more questions?
No, no more at the present time Chair.
Thank you. So we will then move on to the parish council. Thank you very much, Mr Tovey for coming along and for taking all that trouble over the video. And we'll move, if you could mute your microphone and turn your camera off if you have done. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the parish council representative, councillor Sue Wood. Good morning again.
Good morning. Good morning.
When you start speaking, your clock will come up and show your three minutes. And you've probably heard that if you're still speaking at the end of three minutes, I should tell you the three minutes is up. But if you could just finish your sentence.
Yes, thank you.
When you're ready.
Right. Thank you Chair, members of the committee for allowing me to speak on behalf of the parish council. Firstly, we have no issues with the demolition of the existing single story side and rear extension to the house and its replacement with a larger single story extension. However, the officer's report fails to address the pre-planning advice that the material should be traditional and reflect the historical architecture and character of the area. Both the applicant and the case officer have chosen to ignore this advice. And we feel not enough weight has been given to the rural and countryside aspect of the high quality places SPD, paragraphs 4.24 and 4.25, which refer to consideration of rural housing layouts and the interface with the countryside. The potential distinctive extensions to enrich the vitality of the build environment quoted by the case officer from the high quality places SPD should not be applied here. The choice of metal and timber do not comply with RVDS, nor is it appropriate to this particular part of the conservation area. We can find no evidence of a written historical environment report being available, despite this being a statutory requirement under NPPF guidelines. When revisions were made to the original plans, and the proposed new garage height was subsequently increased, again, no historic environment report is available. This is unacceptable. Turning to the demolition and construction of a replacement detached garage, the case officer fails to mention under the relevant planning history section of his report, that in 1995, an application to build garages on the same site as this application was refused by, and I quote, virtue of its size and height, which would result in overdevelopment of the site, and a building which would be inappropriate in relation to adjoining buildings, spaces and views, and which would detract from the appearance of the Spa Shalt conservation area. Nothing has changed in this respect, and yet the case officer dismisses this as non-material to planning. The existing garages are largely hidden behind a high hedge and have good tree cover distraction. Perhaps one needs to consider the carbon footprint of demolishing a perfectly usable building. We disagree that this is the logical position for the new garage, or that it is in context of the existing group of detached houses. Contrary to the officer's report, it will dominate the site and increase massing in that area. The proposed site is right on the boundary of the neighbouring property and is on higher land, and it will become the main focus when entering the shared driveway because of the feature shally windows and its positioning. It's visually intrusted from Church Lane, the public footpath and the two immediate neighbours on the shared driveway. The application has failed to take into consideration the very detailed objections from the parish council and the two immediate neighbours who we feel should be listened to. Councilors, please reject this application as it fails to comply with the policy reasons that we detailed in our objection submission. Thank you, and I apologise for going slightly over.
Thank you very much councillor Wood.
Thank you.
Please just stay with us because there could be questions from the committee for you.
Councillor Reed Chair, please.
Councillor Reed.
Good morning councillor Wood.
Morning.
The objections raised by the parish council refers to the village's design statement, which I believe is 2007. Is that correct still?
Yes.
Is being reviewed in light of the new local plan?
It is certainly being reviewed in light of the local plan. In fact, our detail tends to go a little bit beyond the current, the, the high quality places SPD. So we're a little bit more, we're reluctant to put it in now because of the changes that need to come. But we do work very closely with the, the design plans and all of the local plan parts. And that's what we've worked with in, in this exercise to give you the information that, why we objected.
Thank you. On your fifth bullet point, you refer to two car parking spaces just inside the entrance are inappropriate. Could you enlarge more?
On, on the original plans, as you came into the entrance to the driveway to the houses, on the right hand side, directly alongside the footpath, there was a proposal to put two car parking spaces in there. And we did say in our final objection that we appreciated the fact that that has now been removed.
Right. Thank you very much councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reed. Vice Chair, any further?
No, I have no more Chair at this present time.
So thank you very much councillor Wood. Thank you for coming along today. Do stay with us. But if you could just turn your camera and your microphone off, that would be great. Thank you. And then last public speaker is the ward councillor. Good morning.
Good morning Chair, and thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I am the councillor for the Spa Shalt village where the applicant lives. And I have reached out to the residents to see if we can find a compromise about their application. Because there's limited concern about the house extension, but significant concern about the garage locally. But sadly, I was unable to achieve the same. The owners did not approach the parish council until they had submitted their application. And it's such a pity that applicants are not encouraged to do that more assertively. And the architects tell applicants, they know the council, it will go through without an issue, and they're lulled into a false sense of, about the views and the process. Sadly, the letter from the applicant yesterday shows their concerns about the view of the application from the village and the parish council. And that's such a pity. I question though, why we're recommending a perfectly sound garage is demolished and rebuilt, just because the homeowner wants to move it, when we have a very clear green agenda at the council. Indeed, at the council meeting last night, many of you were advocating the green agenda. It came up continuously through the debates. So I cannot see how we can support a garage demolition today. I question the assertion from Mr Quigley that the garage will be less prominent from the public views, page 56 of his report. Mr Quigley has clearly not stood on the public footpath as I did this week, and looked directly at the proposed garage site, which will be visible to all. The officer also confirms the garage does not detract from the conservation area features. Chair, this is simply not the case, as you will have seen from the visuals that Mr Tovey so ably shared with us this morning. The visuals provided by Mr Tovey have tried to demonstrate the issues regarding the location, the relocation of the garage. This makes the movement of traffic more restricted. And I wish you could all see the setting. A site visit would be my recommendation to you to see the rural setting, the tree location. The reason they have TPOs is they're hugely valued. The concerns about the shared drive and traffic movements, like any village, and you've discussed our village before, traffic movements are always key. I believe you've not been able to appreciate the concerns about the traffic movement into the site and the shared drive by the three properties. And I question the confirmation that the site can accommodate the additional traffic as articulated in the officer's report. And Chair, please correct me if I'm wrong, but should this application not have an historic environment, environment report presented with the application as already raised by the parish council? Perhaps the officers can confirm if this decision is sound without such a document. The site has highly valued trees. And if you look back at the original plan, application for the three houses on the site, as mentioned by the officer earlier this morning, there were core, they were core to the planning decision that was made at that time and why there are TPOs. Chair, also, the very clear refusal on a previous planning application for the garage, although deemed not to be a consideration for today, I would actually suggest to you that absolutely nothing has changed in our village since that last application. And the planning policies, although updated, again, would not bring a different decision. So I question why the application today gets a yes, but the one several years ago was refused, and the clear articulation of why not. So Chair, can I urge please the committee to reject this application this morning? And that allow, that, that will then allow us to work with the applicants to find a new plan that hopefully can work for the benefit of the conservation area, the benefit of a beautiful part of the village, and for all to find a suitable solution. Thank you Chair for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. There could be that there are questions for you. Sorry, I can sort of echo you when I speak. Hopefully that will do. Any questions for the Horrel?
None. None indicated at present time Chair.
Thank you. You raised.
Thank you.
I made note of councillor Horrel. We will ask those questions. So thank you very much for coming along. Shaun, anything you want to take up there? Oh councillor Reed, did you have a question?
Chairman, yeah. Sorry, we're getting a very echoey from both you and councillor Clea.
Well, now that councillor
Now you're on, now you're on, you're all right.
The echo disappeared?
May I say, it was only whilst councillor Horrel was on, so.
Yeah. Sometimes two technologies jar, don't they? I think that's what the problem was. Can you hear the echo now? Councillor Reed?
Sorry, I'm trying to get the microphone back on. No Chairman, I think you're possibly right because there was three of you in line. It didn't work terribly well.
Yes, I think it was the clash of councillor Horrel and my own technology that caused the feedback. I don't, I have no idea why. Anyway. I've lost the plot now. Oh.
No, there, there were no questions Chair.
No, no. Shaun, anything you want to update us on in the light of comments?
Thank you Chair, there's quite a, quite a few points there. So if I, I made some notes. I, I think the, the, the first thing to say is that my, my responsibility is to judge this case on its merits. And as far as I'm aware, the previous application for detached garage was in a different position on this site. But in any event, as I say, each, as members know, each case needs to be decided on its merits. And whilst it is a consideration of what's happened before, my assessment is, is been on the merits of this case and its acceptability in terms of the conservation area and the area in general. If I can take members back to the elevations, particularly the elevation which shows the relationship between the, it's the north elevation, which shows the relationship between relationship between the, it's the north elevation, which shows the relationship between the proposed garage and the existing house. There we are. So although the presentation that the objector has shown, you know, shows a very different picture to that, Chair, and I should point out that I have no idea how that presentation was put together and the veracity of the measurements and proportions and scales it purported to show. However, these are the technical drawings to scale, which will be the approved plans if members go with the recommendation for approval, showing the relationship between the property and the, not only the extension, but the garage. And you can see clearly from there, or as I said in my presentation, although the garage, the replacement garage is large, it is in proportion and therefore in accordance with the design guidance and the local plan policy. The fact that it's then is it has materials which are in keeping also adds to the mitigation of the size. I noticed a bit of a contradiction with the parish council comment that the high hedge shields the existing garage, but that wasn't felt that it also shields the views of the single storey extension, so a little bit of a contradiction there. I'm a bit disappointed that councillor Horrall thinks that case officers don't visit sites and don't look at them from every angle, but I can reassure the committee that obviously I've taken great care to visit the site many times to understand the setting and the context, and the main one being that this area is an area of, although it's within the conservation area, it is fairly new housing. And if you look at the block plan, the, notwithstanding the demolition of the existing garage, which we don't have powers to really halt, this is a logical position for a building, a new building, a new garage, which is amongst the existing properties. And as I said in my presentation, when it's viewed, it will be viewed against a background of built development. Finally, Chair, people have quite rightly pointed to the context provided by the conservation area, and if members look at the conservation area document, it sets out in succinct form the principal positive features of the Sparshel conservation area. And I could run through them quickly, Chair, but my main point is that this replacement garage or the extension don't offend or have any, don't go against any of the principal positive features of the conservation area, and that's very important.
Thank you. I think, I'm putting words into councillor Horrall's mouth here, but I think her concern was that there's nothing in the report from the historic environment team. So if you could just run through the main points from the historic environment report, is that possible?
Well, quite a few cases, Chair. We don't have written advice from the historic environment, such as their, such as their resources. On cases where it's deemed there isn't going to be a particular issue in relation to historic conservation, that advice can be given informally, and that happens a lot, not only with historic environment, but with tree officers, as in this case, actually. So they're discussed with the specialist advisors, but it doesn't mean to say that advice hasn't been given and hasn't been reflected in the decision. It has. So going back to your point, Chair, the principal positive features of the historic, of the conservation area are things like a historic hilltop settlement locating at the meeting point of various routes, an informal street pattern made up gently curving narrow lanes, ancient lanes such as Home Lane which are sunk into the countryside with high banks and hedges, the preservation of trees and greenery, which this application does, and then there's some more, to more minor points. So these are the reasons why the conservation area is designated, and this development doesn't go against any of those features. And I think members have got to bear in mind, this is an area of additional new housing whilst, or whilst it's within the conservation area, is at the edge of it and has little impact on the people's experience of the village itself. And finally to say, from public viewpoints, apart from the path to the right, the footpath, this, the proposed garage, the proposed new garage, which has attracted most attention, will be virtually invisible. Will be invisible because it can't be seen from any of the main streets that I've mentioned within the village itself. So they're the points I'd like to make, Chair.
Thank you. Could I just ask, we'll probably come to this in the report, but as we've got that slide up in front of us, so the garage is going to be built in front of the garage that we can see from the next door property, isn't it?
That's right, Chair.
So how will the cars access that? Will they take some of that hedge down?
Yes, the application includes the loss of that hedge, which has been deemed of, you know, not particular great quality. So a car approaching that garage would drive from where we get the view, and it would then go over towards the front of the property, off that access road, so it would be out of the way long before it got there. And as you can see, there's plenty of parking, in any event, in front of the property, as it backs on to that existing garage that you can see with the hipped roof.
Thank you. And then one more point from councillor Horrall's presentation, and I think probably the parish council, the issue over taking down a perfectly sound garage, which is the current garage and is being demolished.
Yes, Chair. Well, I mean, my view was that we have no particular powers to insist that that garage is kept. I mean, I understand the logic of why do we need a new garage when you've got a different kind of garage, but, you know, my job is to assess the application as it is. And the application as it is, is the demolition of the existing garage, which has a neutral contribution to the conservation area, and in any event is, as councillor, as Mrs Wood pointed out, is shielded from view from public areas. You know, my job is to assess the application before me, so no problem with the demolition of the existing garage, and in my view, the replacement garage is acceptable in all respects.
Thank you, Shaun. Thank you. So we'll now go on to questions from members to you. If we could start then with page 55, there's just one line, principle of development. I want to page 55, this is it. So. Principle of development.
Chair, I have.
And impact on the character and appearance of the area.
Chair, I have three councillors wishing to speak, councillor Bento, councillor Leaming and councillor Reed.
Councillor Bento?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm a little bit confused about some aspects of this building, because I'm looking at page 65, the picture of the 70 with a big red arrow on, where the garage is supposed to go, but that shows a huge amount of woodland. Yet, when we've looked at some of the other pictures, that woodland doesn't seem to exist, apart from one tree. Now, I can't imagine that all that green on page 65 comes from that one tree. So that's one puzzling point for me. The other puzzling point is, why do these properties use this single track when there's probably is access off Church Lane? And I'm not quite sure where the original garage is. Is it that blue? Was that a swimming pool? Was it nearer Church Lane Road? I can't really make out that. So if Shaun could give me some clarification now, that'd be grateful.
I would suggest that this is a very old Google photograph, because I have been on site, and it's that wood is certainly not there. But anyway, Shaun, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So that the wooded area you're referring to is just the canopy of the trees you can see on the photo now. So from above, those, that wooded area which is the red arrow points to, is the canopy of three very large trees. And they're the trees that you can see in that photo, councillor Bento.
So they're including these ones nearer the front?
Yes, so they will be preserved. When you saw the aerial photo again after this development, you'd see the same thing. The wooded area appearance would remain.
And there's also a little clump of these three trees at the entrance, and so it's on the left hand side of that photograph, isn't there?
That's right, Chair. They would remain as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. On councillor Bento's second point, there is no access to these properties from Church Lane, councillor, so these three properties do share this lane, which isn't problematic. It's often how these kind of infill developments are made, and there's, you know, I'm not aware of any problems which happen at the moment, and I have no reason to believe they'll occur in the future. So, you know, it's. That's my, that's my point. On the third point from councillor Bento, looking at the aerial photo, can we see that truly? The, this is, this is, as this, this is, shows the situation as that today. There's a swimming pool, the blue is the swimming pool, and to the right of that, you can see the existing garage.
Right, I thought that must be it.
Which had sort of dormer windows in the roof. But because of the shielding around the site from Church Lane, you don't, you can't really see it particularly, and that's the garage that will be demolished. It's an older building and, yes, that's what we're, that's what we're responding to.
And the newer one is not going to have much sight from Church Lane either, is it? Other than when you're.
Absolutely.
Right up against the hedge.
Correct. It would, you wouldn't have any views of it, in fact. The only views of it will be from the access road itself and from the footpath running up the eastern boundary. But as I've said and tried to show you from my elevation drawings, it's in proportion to the house, which is what all your design guidance tries to achieve.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bento. Councillor Leaming?
Thank you, Chair. I have two main questions. One is that we see that there were pre-application advice on this, but the materials that are being used are different to that. I just wonder why, what those materials should have been if the pre-application advice was followed. And also, if you look at this picture that's on the screen now, you've got a very large pine tree on the boundary where the garage is about to go. Have we got sufficient root protection in for that? Because you've got a garage on one side of it, and you're building on the other side, so the tree will have hardly any root structure at all if you dig down. So I'd like some assurances on both those points, please.
Would you like to move to spawn, Chair? We've gone muted.
Please.
The, on the pre-application advice, pre-application advice is given in this case, not by me, actually, but by another officer. And in relation to the materials, I think the pre-app advice would have said, one option, perhaps a preferred option, would have been to use materials in keeping with the existing house. However, planning policy guidance doesn't enable us to say that that should happen, and pre-application advice is given, you know, we're not bound by the pre-application advice. So in this case, when people come back in with a contemporary design, you know, our duty is to assess that. And as the design guidance for the council says, contemporary designs can be appropriate because you can enable the building to be read as the old and the new. And as I said, in this case, views from public areas of that extension will be extremely limited, notwithstanding that it's a very high quality development using high quality materials. On the second point was the tree, yes. Very detailed, our borocultural reports have been provided with the application, such that I'm satisfied that although the new garage will be in the vicinity of that pine tree that the councillor referred to, the development can be pursued without damage to that tree. So I'm totally satisfied that there is no danger to that very important protected tree.
Yeah, I mean, basically what I'm interested in is the impact of the visual part of that area, if we drive up past that house, because that garage is going to be quite a defining point in the track road or whatever you wish to.
Yes, it's, you're right, it certainly will be visible because it's a significantly sized building. However, it's one building amongst, as you go down the lodge on the left, then there'll be their garage, which in my view is in proportion to the house. There'll then be the existing garage, which you can see on the photographs, and then there will be two more houses beyond that. So it's one, it's a building amongst other buildings. That's its context, that's its visual interpretation, and that's how I've come to my assessment.
Thank you.
And if I could just ask, and I think you've already told us, Shaun, but that's not a public view. The view as you drive past is only for the people who have access to the other properties. It's not a wide public view, is it?
That's right, Chair. It's a private, it's a private road. Public views will be from the footpath running up the east of the site. But again, from that view, it's a building amongst other buildings with a backdrop of other built development, so its visual impact is not that remarkable.
Can I just make one point, Chair? That the other side of the hedge is a public footpath, as I believe, so you would get significant people walking past, and that was my relevance of my point. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. And, Dawn, I know you've been up the public footpath. What sort of view, is there sort of screening, a hedge?
Yes, there's hedging, but undoubtedly you will see past the hedging and the building will be in your sight. But, you know, that's, that's appropriate, and we've, I've worked with the applicant to get materials in keeping, to reduce the size of the garage, and that was originally intended, and materials in keeping. But I think that north elevation is the one to have in your mind, because it shows the relative scales of the two. It's a pity, actually, the elevation doesn't show the existing garage to its right, because then you would see it as a one building amongst others, rather than, you know, this in isolation in a rural environment, which it isn't.
Thank you. Councillor Horrall, I can see you've got a hand off. I'm awfully sorry. As important as you are as local councillor, I can't allow what were members of the public, which you were, to speak at this stage, because you've had your five minutes. I'm awfully sorry. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, chairman. I must admit I'm struggling this one. The reason I indicated to speak was to ask for a site plan, a site viewing. I'm pretty proficient at reading block plans and looking at elevations, but this one is actually confusing me somewhat, especially because of the video presentation that we had by Mr Tovey, which put a lot of questions and doubts in my mind. So at the appropriate point, would it be possible to seek a site viewing committee, please?
Right, before you're proposing a site visit, and I'll ask for a second, I would just like to add that I have been out to the site, as I think other councillors have. So, you know, if you feel confused when you look at the report, I would like to urge, in the current climate of Covid, that you do actually make your own private visit. And it does cause a lot of complications for officers. And normally, when we have photos, we ask those photos to be run past officers before they're shown. And I'm not too sure what the case was. And I'm not too sure what the case was with the photos that Mr Tovey showed or the video that he showed us because that wasn't run past you, was it, Shaun?
I viewed it, Chair, yes. And, you know, I felt on this occasion it was something which members could be shown. But if I would recommend that if there's anything that's confusing, maybe we could try to get over that confusion now, Chair.
Well, councillor Reed has proposed a site visit. And then if that fails, then we'll try and sort out his confusion. So do you have a second, Councillor Reed?
I don't know. It's up to the other members.
Just asking.
I can't propose and second myself.
Yeah, I'll second that, Chair.
Is that councillor Raffel?
It is indeed.
Chair, can I ask my question before I decide whether to support a site visitor?
Okay, yes. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. We saw the video, which I think Mike's referring to, or councillor Reed's referring to as well, that showed two vehicles could not drive into that garage side by side. Now, can I be assured from the planning officer that two vehicles can drive into that garage side by side without having to jiggle about? Because the video showed one would actually drive into the other or the wall of the house to get out. Thank you.
Shall I answer that, Chair?
Muted, Theresa.
Yes, please. They are questions to you. That's the same.
In my view, both cars can access the garage. But I'm bearing in mind that it's not necessary that they do access the drive, is the bottom line. I don't know if it's intended to park cars in the garage. So my answer is, yes, they can. But if the applicant decides not to do that, or park one car in, or no cars in, or put a speedboat in there, the orientation and space around this house enables ample parking of maybe 10 cars without interfering with the access.
Thank you for that. You've just allowed me to support councillor Reed's site visit. Because if you're going to build a garage and not put anything in it, why build a garage? So I'd like to say it myself. Thank you.
Chair, we have councillor Raffel also.
Well, councillor Raffel has supported councillor Reed's site visit. So perhaps he doesn't need to ask it before the vote on the site visit. Do you, councillor Raffel?
Chair, I'd like to ask the question because it's about page 69, the ground floor flat. I'd like to find it.
If the site visit is voted through, we'll have to go through all of this again. So if it's not a question pertinent to the site visit, I'm not going to take them now. So let's go to the vote on a site visit. It's been proposed by councillor Reed and seconded by councillor Raffel. Dave, would you like to take a vote through the members of the proposed site visit? But it will have to take place, not all together. It will have to be spread out in how we will determine that.
Of course, we've done others before. Like it, councillor Evans.
Sorry?
We've done others before.
Yes, we have.
We've done other site visits with exactly the same rules in place about social distancing.
I'm just pointing out it takes up a lot of officer time, but that's what the members want and that's what will happen. Dave, would you like to take through the roll call?
Yes, thank you. So in favour of a site visit, councillor Clea?
Well, I've actually been out, so I'm against. Thank you.
Councillor Evans?
Ditto, against.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
No.
Councillor Laming?
No.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Reed?
Yes.
Councillor Raffel?
Yes.
And councillor Bento?
No, I'm against.
So that's...
So...
Five against and three in favour, Chair.
There will not be a site visit. And we'll try and come back to you when we get on to... Is it highways and parking issue that's confusing you, councillor Reed?
Not strictly. It's just that the block plan of the next door neighbours shows a vast distance between the hedge and the actual structure. The photographs make it appear that it's actually on the hedge line. As I say, block plan, I can normally read. This one, if I'm reading it correctly, is giving me a different picture to the photographs. And that is why I want to see it. And as you know, Chairman, I go on site visits on my own. In fact, my wife and I, because I've not been able to drive for some while, have gone to see most of the sites. This is one I didn't particularly go to because we just couldn't get the time to get there. And that's solely and partly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Shaun, would you like to answer councillor Reed's concern over the block plan? Because he understood that, I think I'm interpreting him correctly, that the new garage, proposed garage, was right on the boundary. But on the block plan, it doesn't look like that. Shaun?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Chair. The new garage will be on a line just behind that hedge that you can see in the photograph. So on the block plan, the hedging that you can see on the drawing is just ahead of the line of the front elevation, the side elevation of the garage. So on the photograph, if we can have the photograph, the new garage gable elevation will be... Have we got one? Yeah, it's in your pack, Chair, the first photograph at the start of the presentation, Julie. There we go. So the front elevation of the gable end of the garage will be behind that hedge, just behind that hedge. So in a similar way to the garage, the existing garage abuts the access lane, so will the, in a similar way, so will the proposed replacement garage. So it mirrors the development next door.
Yeah. Would you like to estimate the distance?
Sorry, Chairman, can I just interject? That shows me, that photograph, we do not have in our pack. It's on there now. And that gives a clear distance between the existing garage and the neighbouring property. And the garage, the new garage, will go immediately adjacent to the hedge on the other side, if I'm reading it correctly.
Our chair is at page 63 on your printed agenda.
Yeah, page 63.
Yeah, I didn't look at it there because I expected that to be the title page. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Right, so now councillor Raffel, your question.
Thank you, Chair. Page 69, block plan. It says, and it's very small, I can hardly read it, inside the front door is an office. Is this going to be a business? If so, is there enough parking for visitors that come there?
Thank you through the chair. No, it's not going to be a business. It's going to be a study. And members can look at the conditions we attach. I propose to attach to any permission which limit the use of the garage to... I'm just trying to find it now. Ground floor of the garage, you heard, permission for the purposes of accommodating private motor vehicles and other ancillary domestic storage purposes. The first floor shall only be used as a study home office. The garage shall not at any time be used for living accommodation other than for a study home office on the first floor. It shall not be used for business, commercial or industrial purposes.
Thank you, Shaun. I'm not talking about the garage. I'm talking about the proposed ground floor plans. It's obviously... This is garage, is it? On page 69?
Yes.
That's the garage. Thank you.
Page 69 is the house, isn't it?
It's the block plan of the house.
Hence, why is it called an office?
Oh, apologies, apologies. It's an office in a house. We see lots of applications where people have...
Which is just inside the front door. Why would you have an office if you're not going to, it's just inside the front door, if you're not going to have visitors and parking is a problem?
Well, it's a personal office, I think.
No, you wouldn't put a personal office at your entrance to your house.
Well, that's the modern way of things. If you watch, I watch this thing called Escape to the Country. And that's the way of things now, is that they knock down walls all over the place and have big open spaces. And you quite often open the front door and you're breaking a roof.
That presupposes it'll be used as a business?
Absolutely.
Chairman, if I might, I would just like to sort of point out that this is a householder proposal. So what you're looking at are extensions and alterations to an existing residential dwelling. If an alternative proposal or something else came forward, we'd have to consider that on its merits. We have to consider this on its merits as it is at the moment. And it is a householder proposal. It's not for a separate planning application for a change of use or anything else. And I suppose, you know, in this modern age, and particularly as we've seen through the pandemic with more people working at home, perhaps this is a lifestyle choice. But all I can say is we have to consider this on its merits and take it face value that this is a home office, Chair.
I understand that, Julie. If you're going to propose a change, you put that as a study, not an office. They've got two people sitting side by side so that they can interview people. Looks a bit suspicious to me.
Well, it could be the husband and wife side by side. But anyway, I did query condition four, which is the use of the upstairs of the garage. And I was told by officers that that is quite tight. You can't run any business from there. I'm not sure that we can assume that the applicant's going to run a business from that space. He could be just answering his emails. It's not for us to suggest. Right. So are there any more questions, vice chair, on the areas that we were looking at? With the principle of development and impact on the character of the area? If not, could we move on to landscape and trees?
No, Chair, I have no questions at this present time. Thank you.
Well, could I just, Shaun, that on page 57 of our report, it says there are two TPO trees. But I thought that as you drove in, I did drive in and turn around back out again. But as you drive in to the left, there is a whole clump of trees. So I'm very surprised that there are only two TPOs. But none of those trees are due to be felled, are they?
Correct, Chair. You're right. There are more trees on the site that are protected. But I just drew attention to ones that are in the vicinity of the development. The other significant protected trees, which adds to the character here, will all be preserved and are not affected at all by the proposed development.
Okay, thank you. Vice chair, any more questions on landscape and trees?
No, Chair. Thank you.
And then we've got the rest of the report, which is on page 58. Impact on residential amenities, highways and parking and equality and anything else that anyone wants to raise. Could I just ask, we did get an email from Mr Tovey asking for a section 106 on the shared drive. But he did tell us that there was a covenant also for all the houses that use that little track. Could I just have the officer view on a section 106 agreement? Is it necessary or not? Or any condition to ensure that there's no blocking of roofs?
My view is, Chair, that it wouldn't be an appropriate matter for a 106. And it wouldn't be necessary anyway because, as you've referred to, the access is by covenant, which is a kind of legal agreement. So it would be unnecessary. And as I said, I see no tension between car parking and construction and the accessway, which can be kept unobstructed. So there's no need, Chair, I think.
Chair? You're muted, Chair. You're muted, Chair.
I did ask you, Shaun, about a construction management plan because of the concerns that there might be over contractors parking all over the place. You've already given us your estimation of how many vehicles could park there. But would you like to just tell the committee your answer that you gave me?
Yes, Chair. Whilst I understand people want it clarified that the accessway, which is very important because it gives access to other properties, be preserved, the spacing in the vicinity of the garage, the spacing in front of the house and the vast spaces for parking to the south of the house mean that, in my view, it's not an issue at all.
Okay, thank you. And I've got one more question, and it's about bats. On page 58, the application says that the Seratine bat roost was confirmed in the garage, which is due to be demolished. We have a condition eight, but that concludes reinstating bat roosts somewhere on the site.
The flavour of that condition, Chair, is, as it says, to protect the species, any species that are identified. So in the process of carrying out what eight says, the preservation work would follow from that, in my view.
It doesn't say that the bat roost will be reinstated.
Chairman, with your permission, I think what it's asking for is the bat report and low impact class licence should be submitted to us for approval. And that will explain what is their intention with that going forward. And that will probably set out where a replacement bat roost should be located. And I think, you know, we're satisfied that that condition does that. I think we'd probably like to add the rider that then the development should be undertaken in accordance with those approved details and thereafter retained. But I think otherwise, not quite satisfied that condition would achieve what it is looking to, Chair.
So you're suggesting that we add, instead of saying implemented in full, you're suggesting it's changed to in accordance with...
Chairman, it could continue and say implemented in full and thereafter retained.
Okay, could I suggest, excuse me, that that is altered?
Yes, Chair, if we could agree that with you, if members of mine are to approve this application.
Okay. So, vice chair, any more questions on the end of the report?
No, Chair, no questions. Thank you.
Debate?
Chair, I think councillor McLean, would you wish to say something? And then councillor Reed? And then councillor Laming?
Thank you, Chair. Just on the subject of bats. The bats will choose where they're going to sleep. You can't put a box on the wall and expect them to move in. It doesn't work like that. You know, if they want to sleep in the garage, they will move into the new garage and sleep. Quite simple. You can't condition a bat to stay somewhere.
This is correct, but you can at least give them the opportunity of roosting somewhere. And presumably, the ecological report will suggest the most convenient place to have them. It proves that there are bats in the area, that's all. And they are protected species. And I think, you know, we should make sure that they have the opportunity of roosting in the area. And I think, you know, we should make sure that they have the opportunity of roosting in the area.
I agree, but a bat's a wild animal.
It is. Councillor Reed.
Thank you Chairman. I'm still having difficulties with this particular application, hence why I asked for a site visit. The main concern to me is around the garage area and the protection of the trees. I really need to see that on my, on somehow or other. But obviously on this occasion, we're not going to be able to. And considering that that subject was also by two other members who voted not to have a site visit was rather strange. But nonetheless, I don't feel that I'm going to be able to support the officer's recommendation. I think actually Mr Tovey has actually had it correct. So unfortunately, on this occasion, I will not be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Laming.
Thank you Chair. I also am quite perplexed by this application. There are a lot of inconsistencies in my opinion in what is going on. I think that the garage is the main stumbling block for this particular application. And it appears to have a big impact on the area. Whether you view it from the private road or whether you view it from the public footpath. It is quite an overbearing, in my opinion, construction. And I'm also worried about the tree there. If I take into account then that you've got a home office over the top of it and there is another home office within the actual house. I'm struggling with this to see how we can allow this to go through at this moment in time. I'm erring towards rejection of this application. Thank you Chair.
Vice Chair, any more?
Yeah councillor Bentot Chair.
Councillor Bentot.
Yeah, I'm looking particular at the picture on page 63. And I think that picture makes the whole situation fairly clear. You've got a garage adjacent to this driveway. And there's going to be another garage adjacent to it where that hedge is. And you can see in front of the very large house, there is a car there, but there's still plenty of space there. Adequate space to cars to drive to where the garage will be. And as as the officer said, you know, driving along there, past there, you'd see the big house with a big garage and another garage almost immediately. So sheltered with trees, it seems quite okay to me.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more?
Well, I'd just like to add if I may, that having visited the site, I did have a few concerns about the garage access. And it does appear to have caused possible problems. But having listened today by the officer and everybody concerned, I have come to the conclusion that I will be supporting this application. Thank you Chair.
And I would like to add that it's not for us as a committee to tell people on a household application how they should use their house. So if they want to have the door opening straight into their study, that's their choice. And how they use the upstairs of the garage, that's their choice. And they've been told that it's what it's not to be used for. So if the adjoining houses think that there's any illegal use of the upstairs of the new garage, then all they have to do is to report it to enforcement. They, there will be no public views of either the garage or the extension. And and again, personal choice. The materials are high quality, we've heard from the officer, and they are modern. But you won't see them, you won't see, unless you're driving past or walking up the footpath. You won't see those. And I think again, it's personal choice if the applicant wants to build in a modern way and it's a single story and high quality materials. Trees, I hear concerns about. We have a condition, condition six, which talks about the protective measures for the trees. It's not for us, laypeople, to say, oh, that's not good enough. We should leave it to the experts. And the experts say that they can ensure that the trees will be protected. The trees aren't all over the site, they're just in certain areas of the site. And then talking about the site, there is plenty of parking. The case officer is quite correct. Where the original or the to be demolished garage will be, there's space there. You can see that within the photograph, there's space in front of the house and to the right without blocking the access path. And so if there's a problem over construction traffic, then again, we need to hear about it. But I can't see that that's a problem because there will be plenty of space there. So given all that, I can't see any material reason to refuse it. But I would like, I know bats are wild animals. But I would like the condition eight just tightened up to say that it could be, it should be implemented in accordance with the details that we've had in our report. So yeah, I will be supporting this application.
Chair, I'm not sure if councillor McLean has a question or that was just a comment.
Probably wants to contribute to debate, do you?
Yes, you just said Chair, that there was no public view of the garage, which is patently not the case because there's a footpath that runs right next to it. But also there's somewhere called Home Lane, which is one of the most historic parts of the village. And it will be viewed from there as well. So there will be public views of it, I just think we need to take that into account. Whichever way we choose to vote, we have to be, you know, with the facts we've got ahead of us. Thank you.
Yeah, what I'm meaning is yes, yes, you can see it from the footpath, there is a hedge there. But you won't see it from Church Lane.
But you will from Home Lane.
From where?
Home Lane, which isn't actually on the map, on the plan, sorry.
Well, I'm not sure that you will, but anyway, you've probably made your mind up how you're going to vote. So could I just have the committee's view on strengthening the condition on the bat provision? Albeit that even if we provide homes roofs for bats, we can't force them to use it. If you'd just like to, well, if you agree, if you'd just like to unmute your buttons and say so.
Yep, agreed Chair.
Neutral.
Any objections? Okay, so this application has been recommended for approval. The conditions are set out on page 55 to 60. We have amended condition eight and the informatives are on page 60 and 61. So I'm now going to ask Dave to take a roll call of members on how they will vote. Dave?
Yes, thank you Chair. Councillor Clea?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Against.
Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Raffel?
Against.
And councillor Bentot?
Four.
So that's four, four and four against Chair.
So I have the casting vote.
That's correct, yes.
And I shall be voting for the application, so that application is approved.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of the morning session. I did ask if we could take the appeals paper as we've got a bit of time. But I was told, no, we can't because it's advertised as not being before two o'clock. So we are going to change the wording in future. But to say that the appeals may be taken in the morning or the afternoon. But we can't now because it's been advertised as not before two o'clock.
If I may Chair, I thought we'd put some latitude in our agendas that we could bring things forward. I suggested that about two meetings ago.
Well, I was told by the public law manager, and Michael, do you want to comment on that, that we can't take it now?
Thanks Chair, I should agree we can't take it now. That wasn't myself, I should give that advice earlier, but I would concur with it.
There we go. So we can't go against our legal advice. And so that brings us to the end of the morning session. And we will reconvene for start at two o'clock this afternoon. Thank you members, thank you.